Bring this meeting to order. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call, please.
Jonathan Ramsey.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Kent Demers.
Here.
Robert DeSina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Denise Russ.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The month of September is National Senior Center Month. On behalf of the Town of Watertown, our Senior Center Director Laura Garay is here. And in recognition of that, Laura Garay will accept your proclamation. Laura is our Senior Center Coordinator and our Municipal Agent. She's doing a wonderful job, and that's apparent compared to all the people that are here in the audience tonight to see her receive this recognition. Mr. Chairman?
Proclamation honoring National Senior Center Month. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas the Falls Avenue Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Watertown and Oakville. And whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older citizens of Watertown and Oakville to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas during the pandemic, Falls Avenue Senior Center has been a community partner to, excuse me, ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people 55 and older, many with underlying medical conditions, are cared for and able to stay connected, safe, and healthy. And whereas the Senior Center in Watertown affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experience, skills, and knowledge, enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Ramsey, Chairman of the Watertown Town Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as National Senior Center Month in Watertown, and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Senior Center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. In testimony thereof, I have here and to subscribe my name and cause the seal of the Town of Watertown this fifth day of September 2023. Signed, Jonathan Ramsey, Watertown Town Council.
Mr. Chairman, in recognition of the recognitions, I wrote a memo which is in front of you in regards to the appreciation for town staff and their contributions. I'd like to read this letter memo to the Town Council and those here for tonight's meeting. "I am writing to express my strong support and admiration for the dedicated staff of the Town of Watertown and the remarkable work they consistently undertake to enhance our community. As a resident of Watertown and an individual closely connected to our municipal government, I witness firsthand the tremendous efforts put forth by our town employees. The success and well-being of our community hinge upon the tireless contributions of those who diligently work behind the scenes. Our town staff spanning various departments and roles are the backbone of our municipality. Their unwavering commitment to serving the residents of Watertown is genuinely commendable. From the planning and execution of essential public services to the thoughtful implementations of developmental projects, our staff consistently demonstrates their dedication to making our town a better place for all. This is always shown as they manage day-in and day-out tasks and competing projects that pull from different directions. In my interactions and observations, I've seen our town employees exhibit a strong sense of professionalism, expertise, and genuine care for the community they serve. Their efforts often go beyond the call of duty as they tackle challenges with innovative solutions and maintain a positive attitude even in the face of adversity. They are aware, as I am aware, that no individual or organization is perfect. But as delays occur, competing priorities evolve, the dedicated staff members self-correct or take corrections and move forward. The synergy among different departments is evident in the effort to obtain more seamless coordination and collaboration within our local government. This integrated approach not only ensures the efficient functioning of essential services, but also contributes to the overall sense of unity that defines our town. As we move forward, I urge the Town Council to continue its steadfast support for our staff, recognizing their hard work and dedication through appropriate measures such as recognition programs or professional development opportunities, and publicly acknowledging their hard work would maintain and even boost morale and foster a culture of excellence that will benefit the entire community. I wholeheartedly support the dedicated individuals who, through their choice of employer, their time, skills, and passion, contribute to the betterment of the Town of Watertown. Their impact is profound and invaluable, and I am confident that by acknowledging their efforts, we can collectively enhance the quality of life for all residents. As Randall Stutman stated, at the base of leadership, what all great leaders have in their heads and their expressions is the idea that they want to make people and situations better. I want to applaud our town employees. They work hard every day, and I just want you to know how I feel about that. Thank you."
Thank you.
Just one more thing along those lines. I received this from the police chief today. Officer Joe Diadona will be recognized by the Police Commissioners Association of Connecticut at their annual awards dinner held on Wednesday, September 27th at Bazano's Four Seasons in Stratford. Tickets are $125 per person. Please let them know if you were interested in tickets. Officer Diadona will be receiving the Meritus Service Award for the quick action he took when a passenger vehicle collided with an occupied school bus and then caught fire. Officer Diadona extinguished the fire and brought all occupants to safety. Next is public comment. Anyone that would like to address the Town Council, please step forward and state your name and address. And just as a reminder, there is a five-minute limit.
Al Mickel, 95, Woodbine Avenue. As I usually do, I want to talk about the public comment. I think it needs more work. One of the things I was thinking about is, what's the definition of rude? And my question to you is, can you tell me what the definition of rude is? It's usually when somebody doesn't answer a question that you ask them. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Catherine Dinsmore, 35 Reynolds in Watertown. Good evening. There's been a tremendous amount of speculation on social media about who is accountable for the $18.8 million liability incurred with the city of Waterbury. Most recently, a Facebook poster blamed an unnamed individual for authorizing the reduced water and sewer payments to the city of Waterbury, reduced payments that were kept from the public. Those of us who have lived in town for a significant amount of time knew exactly to whom the Facebook poster was referring. Most disturbingly, the Facebook poster, who was not anonymous, identified as a town employee in the post. It is inappropriate for town employees to make such claims, especially regarding a situation as serious as this one, which has so many legal and ethical ramifications. If the town has not established a social media policy for its employees, I suggest it become a priority in order to avoid the future posting of such egregious and unsubstantiated statements. Thank you.
Richard Rosansky, 35 Reynolds Street, Watertown. Two items tonight. One of the items to be discussed tonight is another proposed consulting agreement, this time with CCM Municipal Consulting. This consultant will be hired with the intent of, quote, "optimizing our municipal operations" and, quote, "fostering collaborative initiatives with the Board of Education." The last time I looked, we had a well-paid town manager, a well-paid human resources director, a well-paid finance director, a well-paid Board of Education business manager, and a well-paid superintendent of schools. Do you seriously want to tell the public that you need to hire a consultant at $155 an hour plus mileage to get your management team to collaborate with the Board of Education and to optimize your municipal operations? Item two. The Town of Watertown's selection of new gen strategies and solutions to perform a water sewer rate survey for $42,000 is quite puzzling. Watertown's two expert witnesses in the recent Waterbury-Watertown lawsuit, Mike Maker and Ed Donahue, are partner and principal respectively of this consulting firm. Their expert testimony was found in the court's summary judgment to be, quote, "unreliable," quote, "internally inconsistent," quote, "inconsistent with testimony of other witnesses that the court found more reliable." In addition, the court called these two expert witnesses' conclusions, quote, "ridiculous." So why is Watertown engaging this firm to perform a rate study after these members performed so dismally as the town's expert witnesses in a court of law? Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Motion for the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the special town meeting minutes of August 21st, 2023.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Gary? Turn on your mic. Your mic's still not on.
It went on before, but not now. All right. On the third page.
Yours is mine.
This is for the special town meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
About halfway down where it says Mary Ann Rosa asked, is there any potential for the town to also hook? I wonder if that should be look instead of hook?
Yes. Well, one letter off.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Instead of look, it says hook. So we'll amend it for that. Anyone else?
My name is misspelled in one place. I know, just the EL, supposed to the AEL. It was in the discussion. I can get you the exact location.
Oh, we're not in the regular meeting yet.
Oh, wait, oh, that was a special meeting.
This is just the special.
Oh, sorry, sorry. No, not the special meeting. It was a regular meeting minutes.
So any further comments on the special town meeting minutes of August 21st, 2023? Seeing none, all in favor of the amended minutes, please say aye.
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 All oppose? Extinctions? Motion passes?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 21st, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, so it's on page 10, the first time I speak. My name is misspelled there.
Just missing the A. Just missing the A.
Oh, yes, just the missing the A, yes.
We'll get the other as well. Any further comments? Gary?
Yeah, and the regular one on number five. Says Rich Rosansky talked about the lawsuit. Should it be lawsuit?
Yes.
And, uh, one, two, three, four. On the fourth page, uh, in the number eight paragraph, it said they mitigated quite a bit of flooding in that area. I wonder, should it be just bit? B I T instead of V I D or? Oh, okay.
Quite a bit, B I T.
That's it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Extinction?
Stay.
One, extension, sorry. Motion passes. Chair's report, I just wanted to mention that we'll have a water and sewer informational session on Thursday at 6:00 PM at Watertown High School for anyone that has any questions or wants to learn more about what is going on there. Commandant's report? Turn off some of your mics, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give you an update on some of the departments, the Fire Marshal and Planning and Zoning are collaborating and/or creating, improving regulations for food trucks and Airbnb. It's actively being involved. We do have food trucks in our town, so they want to put some regulations to make sure that they're safe for usage. Fall is on its way. The Fire Marshal's Office is ramping up its efforts on inspections and preparing for October, which is Fire Safety Month. The Fire Department has increased volunteer numbers by 12 due to their recruitment efforts. Very happy about that. The Police Department continues recruiting and has just sworn in an officer that retired from the Waterbury Police Department, Officer Wiedemeyer. He started, I believe, this past Monday. We're very happy to have him. He's a very well-qualified officer. Our K-9 Officer Fran has graduated and has been cross-trained in narcotics tracking. We've had a lot of complaints regarding speeding and crosswalk issues. The chief and the deputy chief have been working. They created a two-man car deterring speeding, putting this two-person vehicle out in the public. They kind of work as their own group. They don't need backup. They work together, and they've been working on suppressing speeding in our town. We've also, and I'm not sure if the chief is aware of this because I just sent out the email today, but we're going to work on collaborating social media posts to bring more awareness of speeding and its consequences and the usage of crosswalk safety. Our crosswalk safety sign has been driven over several times, and it's the cost of $600 every time we have to replace it. The Police Department did repair it, so it is back in use at this time. Public Works has been working diligently to perform detention-based and cleanup to mitigate stormwater flooding. As you're aware, we put a pavement management program in place, and Public Works has been out there implementing that plan. They're improving our roadways by crack sealing, skim paving, chip sealing. There's been fog sealing, which has, for me, it's up in the area where I travel to get to work, and it's really incredible once they fog seal that chip sealed area. Looks great. They also put out the bid full-depth reconstructions and overlay areas, and we expect that to happen in this fall as well. Just as a reminder, our roads didn't deteriorate over a week or a month. It's been 20 years. Takes some time for us to get out there and start these repairs, but Public Works is doing a great job in implementing the plan that we put in place. The Hungerford Road Project had been stalled for a little bit due to some engineering issues. That project has, they have figured out the engineering matters that were holding this up, and it's been out the bid. We expect that project to be completed this fall. Finance, human resources, and the town management office are continuing to work on the implementation of software, the ClearGov budgetary software, our time and attendance, and the customer relations management, which will give us the ability to understand what type of complaints are being handled by each department. I have personally been appointed to the ICMA, a committee breaking into local government, and I've also been placed on two committees with CCM, two legislative committees which will address land use, housing, transportation, infrastructure, and then labor relations and municipal law. Most of these meetings will be through Zoom, so I won't have to leave town during these collaborations. And sad news, happy news, Lisa Carew has put in her papers to retire for November 1st, so we're very happy for her to move on to the next chapter, but we are very disappointed that we will be losing a very effective manager. And that's all I have for you for tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to subcommittee reports. We will be scheduling another subcommittee for the senior tax relief, hopefully in the coming week or two, to keep that moving forward. And moving on to new business.
I make a motion that the following be approved for the position of mini bus drivers. Entry position, first six months, which is probation, minimum wage plus $5. Months six through 12, minimum wage plus $5.50. After 12 months, minimum wage plus $6.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I have a couple of questions. I know in the memo that Mark put in our packet, he states about the CDL driver's license and the, um, the screening test. But does the town pay for the screening test, for the drug screen?
So I'm going to have Mr. Legassi, our Human Resources Director, answer those questions. I don't know if you have that particular information. If not, we will have Lisa Carew give one of her last department head meetings. Do you have that information, or would you like? Yep, please.
Ray Legassi, 3 Alta Ricio Street, Oakville, and I am the Director of Human Resources. So to answer your question about the mini bus drivers who have a CDL license, they are subject to random drug testing and also physicals, and they do not incur the cost for those items.
Not for the drug screen or the CDL license?
No, ma'am.
They don't pay?
They do not.
Okay. And one other question is, how come this didn't come up at budget time? Because we're in a new budget, and we'll be getting the money to add to the two. Before you answer, Mark, I just want to make a clarification. Thank you. The bus drivers do a tremendous job. They're very likable, but I just think this is the wrong time to be coming with this with a new budget only since July. We've got other things going on in town, and I just don't know where we're getting the money to pay this.
Ray, if you don't mind, I'm going to address this since you weren't here during the budget season. So at the point in time, we understood that that salary range was good enough for our CDL bus drivers. Mr. Legassi and I actually had a conversation today where there's towns with bus drivers out on strike that are demanding $34, $35 an hour. If we don't put the money up, we're going to have to look for people that are going to fill those jobs that are probably not as qualified. And to be honest with you, retention, there is a cost to retention. If we don't keep up with what the cost of these positions hold, we're going to end up with nobody driving these buses. So I think it's very prudent for us to raise the rate. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money. We're talking about $6 an hour. You know, if you put that over 40 hours, it's $240 over 50 weeks. It's $10,000. I think it's in our best interest to address these rates to keep the drivers that we have.
And I'll just make a comment from my own experience retaining employees right now and hiring employees. Let's just say they're not as inexpensive as they were in the past, especially with people that have any type of credentials behind them.
Through the chair. I hope we tend to retain this individual. This individual, I don't know if he was hired before Mr. Legassi's tenure or after, but he's superlative for the job. I've heard nothing but positive from members of the Senior Center, people that he drives to the Senior Center. He's a community-oriented person. He grew up in town. He was a prime caregiver for both of his parents. He's a retired, not only Waterbury policeman, but at one point a retired state policeman. And he really desired this job, and he's gone above and beyond to fill this role. It would be a shame to lose this gentleman because he's definitely a good example of somebody filling the position with success. So I encourage that we try to go with the rates. It's a minor amount for those people at the Senior Center who don't have a way to get to the functions at the Senior Center. Very minor amount. Thank you.
And just keep in mind that minimum wage plus $6 is $21 an hour is what we're dealing with. Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. I have my CDL and have to do the drug testing and the physicals and the license, so I'm well aware of the cost of those. So I just wanted to make sure that all three of those things are covered because the cost of the license is double. So you've got to pay for your regular license, and then it's double on top of that, and then obviously the cost to do the drug test and then the physical. So all three of those are covered by the town?
There usually are by employers.
Mark, I'm wondering, have they, have they asked for an increase or suggested that they might look to work at some of these other companies that you investigated?
I don't, yeah, I'm going to ask Lisa Carew to come up. She spearheaded this effort to retain the people we have. I appreciate Councilmember DeSina's discussion points about one particular, but there are two drivers included here, and this is more about the position. And we, again, his comments are very valuable in that we have valuable employees.
Okay, so how this came up, Lisa Carew, Park and Rec Director, 389 Northfield Road. How this came up is we weren't being competitive. So this goes long before last November when we started putting the budgets together. As far as the licenses, they have to have it because of the size of the bus and the passengers.
Right.
And just like the guys at the Highway Department, it's random drug screen. They show up, the drivers call to the highway garage, and they have to submit to a drug test. So it's not anything pre-planned, and the town is obligated, just like for the Highway Department, so.
My other question is, I've done some of these things in my lifetime. I was an assistant summer camp director. I was a swim coach. I was a lifeguard, and some of those are very difficult jobs. And like certainly lifeguard and swim coach, you have people's lives on the line, just like you do when you're driving a bus. And yet, they're not getting $6 an hour. Can you explain why some of these numbers for some of these jobs that are really challenging and hold a lot of responsibility, they're being paid less?
Okay, we do have flexibility on that chart if there's somebody that goes up and beyond, that there's a range. You can see it on the chart that there's a range for specialty people.
Yes, I see that only in one example.
Well, it's.
For the rec specialist, special events program coordinator.
There is a place there, though, that if there's someone that has up and beyond what is needed for the position that we want to grab, there is a flexibility of having a little leeway in there, so.
Councilmember Ryan, just, you have to remember, we are in transition to a new HR person in this position. It is new. So actually, Mr. Legassi and I had had this discussion, and I actually had it with the Chair and Vice Chair, that we should look at this whole list on more of an annual basis and to Councilmember Russ's comments, more in the line of when the budget is, we're going through the process of the budget. But as we transition through this position, this is something we feel is very important to address at this point, and that's why it was put on the agenda for discussion.
Right, there are two drivers, just so you know. It's not just the one that. It's not just the one that Herm was referencing, there's a female also. The whole situation came up, is I brought it to the attention of the town manager and our new HR guy because we were going to be losing one of our drivers. The person was given an opportunity to go to first student at an increased amount of money. The person preferred to stay with us, with the town, because the person loves working with the seniors. And that's why it was, we weren't being competitive. And this is happening, this is not the first time I've had to come up here and ask for, you know, adjustments because, you know, same thing happened. It wasn't in the budget, but the state of Connecticut for lifeguards, what you were mentioning before, came out with a starting salary of $21 an hour for lifeguard, and they would train them. Our lifeguarding program, the kids get charged, because that's, we get charged by the Red Cross. So, you know, we're just trying to be competitive with what's going on outside in the real world, so.
Right, I think that makes sense. I guess my concern, you know, Mark, as you said, to look all of this over, I just, I don't like the idea of sort of going one by one and, you know, just as something comes up, makes a decision. Because I know that lifeguards are in high demand. Like, that's been a real problem in different places. And so I, that's where my hesitation is. I certainly, like I said, I drive students all over the places in buses. I know exactly what that entails and how important that job is. So I'm not saying that they don't deserve $6. I just want to make sure we're making the right and most informed decision about all of these employees.
And as Mark mentioned, that going forward, the plan is to review this list annually at budget so that they do get updated on a timely basis.
I think it's important to remember that the town has already started the budget for the next fiscal year. So this is coming to us maybe a month or two early, but in reality, it would have been identified in this budget season that we're looking at. So instead of having to wait till July to implement it, we're implementing what we need it now.
Right, and it's unfortunate, but the people, the private sector is in a position where, again, what Mark was saying, you have school bus drivers that are out on strike. I think they came to a decision today that they're going back to work. But you have people that are, you know, fighting, and it's a ripple down, you know, triple down effect here that, you know, it's affecting us also. Because, you know, if they're getting this amount and we're here, you know, we need to bump it up a little bit. It wasn't really foreseen last fall, unfortunately, last November when we started putting the budget together. This is something that came about, I'm going to say in the last six weeks, that one of our drivers is offered another position, you know, and, you know, so we have to try to maintain, you know, be competitive, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out that this is a 75 cent increase on the total package. You know, I know we talked about $6 on top of the minimum wage and all that, but it's effectively a 75 cent raise is what we're talking about at this point, just so you're aware.
Did we check around with the other senior centers to see what those bus drivers are receiving? Or you just did the Daco and Northeast?
What I did is I compared it to what the places in our own town. So we have first student transportation that drives the school buses, and these, our drivers have the same license, they have that CDL license. And I also compared it with Northeast Transportation, which is all your fixed route buses and all your Greater Waterbury Transit District buses and the Dyloride buses. So that's really comparing more apples to apples with the Transit District buses than the school buses. It's a little different clientele, but we weren't being competitive, that's why I'm here, so.
And whose budget is this going to come out of?
It's the budget that I presented to you. It's, there is money in there to, there was an increase this year that I had put in there so we could make sure with our new, well, not new anymore, but our senior center coordinator, if there was times when she wanted to have the bus rolling at night or on weekends, that there was extra money in there. There was an additional approximately $10,000. And that was before any of this came out. But it was just in the event that there was events and things that were going to take place on weekends and at night.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion passes?
Thank you.
I move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $820 from the general fund to the animal control line item for professional and technical services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And just for the record that these funds were received by.
By donations.
Donations, yes. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $34.30 from the general fund to the animal control line item for professional and technical services.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like it to be known that I appreciate the people that donated the money for the dog shelter, it's very nice of them.
Anyone else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
Move to authorize an appropriation in the amount of $5,800 from the general fund for the purchase of, for Senate software, which was purchased out of the maintenance agreement line item at the police department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? Next on the agenda is discussion with, and possible action on the contract with Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Agreement regarding shared services. We've talked in the past about the town council, or the town side and the Board of Ed to facilitate a means of any type of shared services, any areas where we have multiple people doing the same job. I don't think our intention tonight is to approve the contract, but there is a draft, make sure that's in here. There is a draft of the contract for your review. And we also received, I'll grab it from over here, a report from another town that did something similar recently. So it'd be worth us looking through that to kind of pinpoint the services and the areas that we want, or if we choose a consultant to look into further. Is there any comments, questions, discussion, anything you want to add?
Mr. Chairman, also in your, I left on your desk area was a final report. Today I was in contact with somebody from Norwalk, and they actually went through this exercise of using a different company to come in and evaluate shared services. And it's obviously, we'll all, no matter what municipality that looks to shared service, it always comes down to human resource, finance, purchasing, maintenance of buildings. And those are the highlights that this Norwalk, the city of Norwalk, went through to kind of identify where they could save money. A project like this, although there are opportunities for us, we do have to kind of agree to it. So in the scope of service that was provided to you through CCM, it was kind of, I looked at it as, how do we identify what we're going to actually go after? Because the superintendent and I have to agree that this is how we're going to operate. We have to clearly define the responsibilities of each, whether it's the town or the Board of Ed, who's going to oversee it. And how do we do that? We have to talk about that. We have to have legal involved so that we understand the consequences to any changes. And then we have to really look and decide whether this would be an effective change, although it's very easy to say that it would work. You know, we just have, people have different perspectives, and it would be a lot of effort. So as we go through this exercise, and whether it's done directly through the town as an example that we may be able to pull from some other town, or we go to an agency, it really has to start with a lot of discussion. We have to understand it, determine our course of action, and then move forward and see if it works. The specific consultant, and I'm sorry, I don't remember his name off the top of my head, I think it was Mr. Chapman, is a Newington town manager who has been in the municipal service since the early 70s. You know, we had this discussion that there's, there's a lot of towns that go through this exercise. And Attorney Jessel reminded me that when he was town council chairman, Watertown actually went through this exercise to try and identify places that they could save monies. But again, it's a lot of effort, and everybody has to be in agreement, and personalities have to work. So Mr. Chapman did say to me that he felt strongly that if we were able to be successful in this and we identified a few places that we could share services, that, you know, there are other towns that will follow suit in our efforts. You know, for me, that's a big accomplishment if we could help other municipalities as well as our own to identify these areas. But again, it's really up to you to decide whether you want to do it and how we want it to proceed. My suggestion as we, you know, as you go into this information and review some of the new stuff is maybe we identify a very small amount of money, maybe somewhere in the $15,000 to $25,000 range, to explore these ideas. Have somebody come in and have the discussion points with the superintendent, myself, finance, legal, all the department heads on both sides, and see if we can come to some areas of agreement. I also have received a presentation from SLR regarding a needs assessment and master plan for park and recreation. And I don't think this is the right venue, but I did briefly discuss this with Ms. Carew, that this would probably go in front of our park and recs. And there's a lot of items in here that would be very consistent with what we're trying to accomplish. They would look at our park and recreation as a whole inventory, and they would look at our programs, the cost base, the free programs. Actually, what are we providing our citizens so that we better understand how the money is being used properly? They look at the funding profile, the amount of money that we're expensing into these programs. And then it actually looks at user surveys. And this is where it integrates well with the Board of Education, because we could better understand how the Board of Education is using their recreational facilities, how the town is using their recreational facilities, and how do we maybe blend the two? You know, there are a lot of different ways to look at that. And as Mr. Lukowski and I have learned most recently, that as we get these needs assessments and these master plans in place, it sets us up very well to go after grants. So basically, once we get this master plan in place, we can then take off chunks like we're doing on the Main Street and go after smaller grants, not doing the whole project, which better Watertown. As you know, we started the super committee, and that's another area. We have all these volunteer organizations that want to donate items to the town of Watertown. We will create a plan for them to actually pick off these items and decide what they want to invest in. I just think it's a better plan as we start to look through and understand all these processes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment. It's very intriguing, right? Because everybody wants lower taxes. The only way that we're going to get lower taxes is if we reinvent ourselves. And this is one way to reinvent ourselves. There's no reason why this building needs to have two telephone systems. There's no reason why there isn't somebody buying the same ream of paper in both organizations. And just by saving that little amount of money could have a big impact on the town. So I believe this is money very well spent, and I think it definitely shouldn't be moved forward.
Your next?
I had a real quick, really quick question, and that is, do we think that this CCM is the best provider of these services? I mean, I see a sample here from Norwalk, and I don't know if they collaborated with CCM, but they had an entity, Evergreen Solutions. I don't know anything about that company. But they're out of Florida, I don't know if that's good or bad. What are your thoughts about CCM? I mean, is that, that's kind of Connecticut-based, maybe we should be looking to some other, you know, instead of the run-of-the-mill, you know, they do everything for every town in the state.
Well, to be honest with you, this document, we did not identify a company. We actually had a hard time putting together a request for proposals because we couldn't really identify a company to go after. In a conversation, somebody mentioned, you know, Norwalk, and I reached out, and we were able to get that information. So even CCM, at the moment when we first started to explore this, didn't bring up Norwalk. So I reached out to CCM, and I says, hey, I says, you know, I understand Norwalk went through this process. And they got back to me, says, oh yeah, we didn't realize they did that. So, you know, looking at this, we could maybe identify an RFP and go out and attract companies that we're not aware of. The benefit of using CCM is, I guess it's a comfort level. So, you know, we'd have to actually talk through that and decide what would be best for the town of Watertown.
What I would like to see is sort of the opposite of what you said before, Mark, about, you know, if we did this early or first and could set the example. I mean, that would be fantastic, but I would love to see it the other way around and find more examples. I mean, Norwalk's a city, and I don't know how much it can compare to our town. But there's certainly a lot of other towns in Connecticut, in New England, you know, Mid-Atlantic, maybe other places with similar-sized towns that, you know, are dealing with snow and, you know, other similar issues that we are. It seems like we can't be the only ones who've ever thought about this. Like, there have to have been other towns that have tried to do this successfully. I'd rather do a little bit of research before we spend some money, because, you know, my, and I said this before, my fear is, you know, we spend a fair amount of money and don't end up achieving, you know, that, you know, that much in savings. Maybe it's wrong. I definitely want to look through this report and see what Norwalk determined, but, and maybe you've already done that and haven't found many towns, but I think that would be a great, great place to start.
So we did go through the exercise of looking to other towns and municipalities, and, you know, obviously with the internet, it makes it a lot easier to search these things. And I'm sure you're aware, you do a lot of research as a teacher, that, you know, one keystroke changes everything. When we first went through this exercise, CCM did the search, I did the search. I actually found something in the Midwest. And then as I read through it, it wasn't really applicable to what we were trying to do. What I have found is a lot of towns start this process, and nobody ever goes anywhere with it. Because it's, you know, it's difficult, because, you know, everybody has their day-to-day responsibilities. You now have to open up for conversations for a greater effort. And there's not that much time in the day, so it takes time to go through these things. I'm certainly open to do more research. You know, I could probably even reach out to some connections at the colleges to see if they could do some research for me, to see if maybe we could identify more. But it seems like most of the municipalities start the process and then never follow through with it.
Marion?
Like Paul, or Attorney Jessel, I remember a shared services committee when I was on the Board of Education, and we attempted to work with the town. The problem we had then was what I'm hearing again. This great big scope, this great big deal that has to be accomplished that is overwhelming and expensive. What's the problem with having a small committee and taking one issue? Take public works and parks. The town side and the Board of Ed people's side sit down and hammer that one issue out, resolve it, and find how you work that one shared. Go to the next department, purchasing, little by little, take it piece by piece. We can do it, we have enough intelligent people to do it, but we can't look at it as a global thing. We have to take it a little at a time that we can digest and determine what's right for each side. The unions have to come into play as far as the employees go. And obviously, the finances for each department, and who budgets what. And as you said, who supervises what. But you can get through that by talking to each other. I just think we need to think this through a little more before we spend any money.
Anyone else?
Comment, say. Very good words, Marion. Absolutely, I think if we just pick off little things at a time, that low-hanging fruit, we'll make the changes before we know it. And just that, you know, getting one. And just that, you know, getting one thing done and moving on to the next, I, I have to agree, I think that's the way to go, because we all recognize that there's areas in town that we think we could save, roll up our sleeves and let's do it.
So I already have a, a plan framed out to how to move forward in the process. It wouldn't be hard to adapt it on maybe establishing a hierarchy of avenues to, to go through. You know, maybe picking something small and actually seeing how that works. That is a doable project. But, you know, at the end of the day, no matter what project it is, if you don't have a champion for it, it's gonna die somewhere along the way. So we have to identify who's gonna be the champion for the project.
We will.
That's, music to my ears.
We will.
But really, I mean, that's the bottom line, is you have to have a champion for the project for it to move forward. And, you know, if we wanna identify one thing to work on and see how it works out, I think that's a great test.
And we can get Board of Education members to champion too.
Absolutely.
So that the two boards are working together to accomplish it.
You'll see when you go through this Norwalk report, a lot of it is based on the efforts of communication. It all comes down to that, so.
I also, I'll just say quickly, I also agree with Marian, I think she said that right. I think you start with what, what do we think is somewhere we can, maybe if you can, I would appreciate you coming to us with that type of list, I think that that's something that is palatable, instead of just this, you know, otherwise you're right, I don't think we'd ever get it done, it's just too much.
Okay, I, I could certainly put a list together of, you know, areas that we've already talked about and understand that may be beneficial to the town. And then I think the next step would be to, you know, choose that champion and understand what the makeup of the committee would be. I think that's gonna be very important as well.
If there isn't any other discussion, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation in the amount of twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-six dollars for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes?
I make a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing pending litigation in the case of the City of Waterbury versus the Town of Watertown. In attendance will be the town council members present, the Town Manager, Attorney Paul Jessel, Mr. James Smugden, hope I'm pronouncing the name correctly, Attorney Franklin Pilacy, Mr. Jerry Lukowski, and Mr. David McMahon.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes? We'll enter into executive session.
Recording stopped.